You don't have to run away from them. You could engage them, you could say hello, you could speak. If you had to have a sad conversation, you could talk about sports and local sports, because those are never good. But you you have the ability to talk about it. You could talk about your families. You could even say, did you go to Taste of Pines? What a great event that was, right? Or you could mention, you know, um, you you could talk about certain, a lot of things. But what you can't talk about are, and it's very specific for this board, matters that could foreseeably be presented to you. So if there's a vacant lot somewhere in the city and you have a great idea for that lot or what you'd like to see there, then you shouldn't be talking about that in publics. You should be talking about it here in a public forum that's been noticed and that people have the opportunity to come and witness it and that you're gonna have a recording of the minutes, et cetera. Uh, so really, when it comes to sunshine law, that's the main prohibition for you that you have to be considerate of on a day-to-day basis. And this applies not only to direct communications, but indirect communication. So you can't say, well, you know, I didn't, I didn't talk about it, but my partner did. It you you can't, you can't have people speak on your behalf to other board members either. If you're gonna speak in any form or fashion about official business having to do with your official function as a planning and zoning board member, then that, those conversations need to be, uh, had here in a public forum, such as the one that we're having today. Now, as public officials as well and as part of the city, we also adhere to Florida's public records laws, which are codified in our state statutes under chapter 119. Florida, very broad public records laws. More likely than not, if there's something that has to do with the official course of business that you're engaging in and it's some sort of written communication, then that's a public record. So, uh, that includes your emails. If you're sending emails regarding what's going on, it's a public record. If you're, uh, texting someone regarding this board or your capacity in it or a zoning matter that's before the city of Pembroke Pines and that's official business, that text becomes a public record. Just like if you go home on Facebook now and you said, you know, we had such-and-such application here and this is how I feel about it, that's a public record. So what happens with public records? People have the right to access public records in the state of Florida. And they do so by reaching out to the custodian of records, which, as I stated before, is your city clerk. So usually, as a custodian of records, the city clerk has a pretty good and pretty, uh, effective way of, you know, ensuring that she now has access to these records, right? And most of the records are accessible. Either they keep them directly with the city clerk's office or it's kept with a department. Here, it's a little bit different, because if you're engaging in a conversation that has to do with your official duties and creating a public record and someone were to make a request for that record and the city clerk doesn't have it, you become the custodian of that record. The city clerk will then reach out to you and say, board member, we received this public records request. We need to be responsive to it under, uh, state law. Do you have this record in your possession? If it's something that never existed, then that's the answer. But if it is something that existed and you have in your possession, then that's some, that's a record that you then would be tasked with submitting to the city clerk. That's your sunshine law on public records in a nutshell. If there's any questions, again, we could answer. If not, then, and you have other questions that may come day-to-day, you have, you all have my email, you all have my, I could provide you with my phone as well and you could call me directly and we could have those conversations. We wanna make sure that you're all abiding by the law and it's always better and we always advise to just ask the question before uh, and we'll be more than glad to provide you with any advice. So that's that. We'll move on to quasi-judicial. So, a quasi-judicial proceeding is, it refers to when you have a body, such as this planning and zoning board, that's following a process that's very similar to what you'd see in a court proceeding or a judicial proceeding. And the reason why you do this is because in 1993, there was a case that went to the Florida Supreme Court had to do with the Florida, uh, the Board of County Commissioners of, of Brevard County. It's actually, uh, it's, the case is Board of County Commissioners of, uh, Brevard County versus Snyder. And they deter, the court, the Supreme Court of Florida determined that there are four characteristics that mark what, uh, an application or a case that should be considered quasi-judicial in nature. And this is when the action results in the application of a general rule of policy. You're not creating a new law, you're applying existing law to something that is before you. Uh, when the decision has an impact on a limited number of persons or property owners on an identifiable party or, or, or the parties are identifiable and their interests are identifiable. So if you have a rezoning for once, you have it for one particular party, it's, or one particular property, those parties are identifiable. When the decision is contingent on facts arrived at from distinct alternatives presented at a hearing, you have these hearings. And when the act determines that the rules of applicable, of law are applicable and the rights affected by them are in relation to past transactions. Those are the standards that the Florida Supreme Court put together. But subsequently, many cities, including the city of Pembroke Pines, has codified its own quasi-judicial proceedings. And that's in section 155 of your city code. So, what, really, if you're looking at it practically now, you're looking at a very formalized, structured type of proceeding that applicants for items that are quasi-judicial in nature, and I'll read you the eight kind of quasi-judicial in nature types of applications that this, that the city's code has deemed to be quasi-judicial, right? So these applicants are entitled to these proceedings. And the purpose of these proceedings, just like any, you know, judicial proceeding, is to ensure that there is equity and that there's an opportunity and a process that to be followed to present evidence. Uh, that there's a formal process in place where, uh, people who are affected parties may be able to present testimony. Then there's ability to cross-examine those people, what, people who have given testimony. It's a very formal procedure. So when the chair has, uh, an applicant before the board and the chair asks, would you like to waive your quasi-judicial proceeding rights? And they say yes, they're really just saying, we don't need to follow this very formalized type of structure that we would otherwise adhere to. We could move forward, similar to most applications that come, the other applications that come before the board, well, they'll have time to talk. And now, and as you've seen on a practical basis, waiving that, um, right to a quasi-judicial proceeding doesn't exclude members of the public from being able to speak. They're still able to speak and they're still able to talk. It's just under, you, you don't have to follow those rigors and that very strict structure that is required by a quasi-judicial proceeding. I'll read to you really quickly the eight kind of cases that the city code says are quasi-judicial. So you have site-specific zoning changes, uh, special, site-specific land use amendments, variances, plat approvals, special exceptions, interpretations of, um, of the department regarding land development code interpretations and appeal of planning and zoning board or board of appeal decisions. So, a lot of those you should be very familiar with. If not, all of them have come before you in one form or another, one time or another. So, whenever you have an applicant, an application that deals with any of those subject matters, the applicant is entitled to a quasi-judicial proceeding. I know, Madam Chair, more often than not, they do waive the rights. And then at that point, um, you could move forward with the here, with the meetings, as you usually do. One thing that I do wanna say is that, you know, even when you're waiving it, when you're waiving your right to quasi-judicial proceeding, you're still in a public meeting, there's still records being taken. The items that are presented, the testimony that's presented is recorded. It becomes part of the public record. So there's still a public record that exists, even if there's a waiver of that, of right to a quasi-judicial proceeding. And lastly, this is important, all the decisions of the body that regard a quasi-judicial matter must be supported by competent substantial evidence. So you have the, you have staff, staff's report, discussions that are, that are occurring here on the dais rationale, where you're exploring your rationale for making any particular decision, one way or another, on an item. Uh, if it's ever challenged, that's one of the things that they look for. Well, what was supporting that decision? So we wanna make sure that, you know, staff puts you in a position and that you all have, you know, healthy discussions and dialogue regarding these items to ensure that there is substance, uh, that there is substantial, competent substantial evidence to back up your decisions. I think that was less than two hours. Thank you. Are there any questions? Again, if there's more specific questions, we're always available and you could reach out at any time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do any, uh, board members have lobbying disclosure forms to submit?
No.
No.
Approval of the February 13th, 2025 minutes. Are there any corrections or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Motion made by, uh, Member Gonzalez, seconded by Member Goldish. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, on to new business. We have two items on the consent agenda. Are there any members of the public that would like to address either item? Are there any board members that would like?
I just have a question on it.
Okay, Member Goldish?
Are there, is somebody here from the mall?
Which one are you on?
Number one.
Number one. MSC 2025-006.
Um, yeah, I just, I'm just reading. I know you guys are changing signs, right?
That's right.
Or are you adding signs to?
Mr. Goldish, I apologize. So we're pulling the item. I just wanna make sure we're pulling this item.
What's that?
We're pulling this item to speak on it.
We are?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
Right, right, sorry, I'm sorry.
The normal approach is to, to pull one of the items and then approve the other one and then open it up for the conversation. I apologize.
Okay.
Okay, so he's pulling item number one.
Pull item one, so you go.
So then we should vote on number two?
Number two.
Yep, okay.
Okay, MSC 2025-007, Haagen-Dazs, facade and signage changes. Do I have a motion to approve?
I still move.
A second?
Second.
Motion made by Doris Gonzalez, seconded by?
No. Rosalina Abate.
Oh, sorry. Motion made by Member Abate, seconded by Member Goldish. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed unanimously. Okay, back to number one.
Sorry, my mistake.
I didn't, I didn't know that either. MSC 2025-006, Pembroke Lake Mall Master Sign Plan Update.
So the only, I just have one, I, I guess it's a combination. Are you adding signs?
The, we're only making some minor adjustments to the criteria on, uh, E1 and E2.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I need you to state your name for the record, please.
My name is Waldea Brew.
Okay.
So, so, uh, most of the signs will stay the same. The only changes we're making, we're proposing are to E1 and E2 sign types.
Which is which one, I'm sorry?
It's on page 13.
There's a picture, there's a picture with colors that shows.
Sorry. All right, so that's not, so that's, that's changing ownership, I understand, right? It's not Red Robin anymore.
I have a hard time hearing.
I'm sorry, it's not Red Robin anymore, obviously, so that's changing.
Yeah, that's, that's just an example of the location. So what we're doing is, uh, if you've seen the description, we're adding a sculpture element to the front, uh, area of the, uh, if you, there's a master site plan there that shows you the locations of what we're, what we're talking about, what we're proposing. So it's just, uh, adding, uh, adding a sculpture element to the PF Chang location, which we're opening up, trying to open up a PF Chang. So they have a horse statue. That's the, um, that's the amendment or the change to that sampling.
So I, I just wanted a clarification. So the, the signs that you're showing in your, on the pictures are the ones that you're changing or upgrading, right?
No, this picture is, is example.
Because it doesn't really specify where anything is going and just.
Just, uh, excuse me, just to clarify, the, the amendment is to change the allowances for the signage there. There's no signs proposed as part of this application.
Can you say that again?
It's just amending the allowances for signage.
Can you repeat what you just said?
The application before you is to amend the allowances within the master sign plan. There is no signage proposed as part of this application.
Okay. So it's basically the horse of the PF Changs that you'd like to add in the front of that?
Into the allowance, yes.
And how big is it, like, is it, does it obstruct any walkway or?
It will not obstruct any walkway. It's gonna be in our, in a grass area that we have.
I have a question about the sidewalk signs. How are those gonna be secured, so they're not knocked over and blown over?
Oh, which side, sidewalk sign? Oh, you, you're referring to, so there was no change to that, that was already?
Sidewalk signs that are in front of, of stores that, you know, face out on the sidewalk.
That's right.
Well, we, we, we have very limited of that, we, we. Are you referring to any sign, signs that are on this plan here?
Yeah.
Or in general?
There's a picture of them.
I guess it's monumental signs? Is that the one on page seven, page seventeen?
Page seventeen, that's what she was talking about.
These are sidewalk signs.
Okay, yeah. So, so these signs are, um, were included in there, um, in, in the very small chance that we're, we're gonna use it. These are, if we do use these type of signs, it's gonna be while we're operating and it's gonna be brought inside at the end of the day. So these are weighted at the, at the base, so they have a heavy base. And if they're strong winds, it's part of our procedures to bring them inside.
They're weighted, the base is weighted?
Weighted, yes.
Yeah, so that's gonna be hard to move in and out, isn't it?
No, no, we, we have procedures, no.
Okay, that's my only question. Anybody else have questions?
No.
Can I have a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion, we're gonna approve on me, sorry.
Second.
Motion made by Member Goldish, seconded by Doris Gonzalez, member. All is in favor?
It's okay, it's okay. Did you do it, you do it again?
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
I just smiled because I agree with you.
You sound, you sound like each other, okay.
I'll be more careful.
Motion, my member Goldish, seconded by member Abate. All is in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed unanimously. I have to start looking over that way. Okay, we have new business, quasi-judicial variance, interpretation, appeal items. ZV 2024-009, Cooper's Hawk, variance request, District One. Do we have an applicant? First, first of all, do you waive your quasi-judicial rights now that you've heard about them?
Yeah, that's perfect. There you go, so you can just scroll down like that. Okay. Thank you so much.
Chairman, we need to swear in both variances. So anybody who's speaking on the variances tonight, for both of them, have to be sworn in. I've got a city attorney.
And I, I asked her, she waived her rights, I don't have to do that? Okay.
Hi. Good do, good.
If anyone can speak on any of the following items for the remaining items on the agenda, please rise and raise your hand if you want to. Cooper's Hawk and Love and Hope's Head. Do you swear on the testimony you're about to give, the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. Hi.
Hi.
Jennifer Lassina, uh, representing Cooper's Hawk.
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Absolutely. Is that good? Okay. Excuse me. Um, my name is Jennifer Lassina. I'm representing Cooper's Hawk Winery. Um, I brought together a presentation, the reason for, um, us being here this evening is to request respectfully for our opening hours on Saturdays and Sundays to move from 11 o'clock AM to 10 o'clock AM. Um, I have a little presentation to show you regarding our brunch program that we, uh, that we recently introduced. So, um, I'm gonna flip through a couple of those slides to save your time. I, I don't know if anyone's ever dined at Cooper's Hawk, but, um, we have some, uh, great menus and, uh, some delicious wines. And recently, we introduced, well, also, we have a large wine club. Um, it's our, uh, it's the largest wine club in the world with 760,000 members. Um, and are continuing to grow with a lot more locations in Florida coming soon. Um, but the reason I'm here is for our brunch, brunch program. So our current hours of operation for brunch are Saturday and Sunday from 11 AM to 2 PM. Um, and we're proposing, uh, 10 AM start time. Um, we introduced a brunch program in all of our locations, aimed to provide our guests with a unique and enjoyable way to gather on Saturday and Sunday mornings. Current city code restricts businesses, other than hotels, golf clubs or racket clubs, from starting liquor service until 11 AM. And in order to operate within the code, our opening time is 11 AM on Saturday and Sunday. And to maximize the benefits of our brunch initiative, we are respectfully requesting the ability to begin brunch service, including alcohol beverages, on, uh, one hour earlier, uh, starting at 10 AM on Saturday and Sundays. I know we proposed the full week and I understand that there might have been some concern about that. Um, and we are willing to amend, um, the seven-day-a-week proposal and, uh, just open Saturday and Sunday to accommodate our brunch hours. Um, why opening early matters, um, so.
If we're here to ask a question, please make sure you're all sitting through because, like, I cannot hear through this. And then?
I know.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
You have to get closer to the mic.
Absolutely. Um, so I pulled a couple of numbers before I came down here and we have rolled out the brunch program company-wide. Every other, most other locations do open, um, at 10 AM on Saturday and Sunday only. Um, and in the Miami area, Pembroke Pines is the second in sales. Um, so we do believe that opening that one hour early will help us increase, um, the sales and additionally the tax revenue to Pembroke Pines. We also take our, um, alcohol service very serious. We do have company initiatives. Um, we do require all of our managers and team members to be alcohol service safe, certified. And we do, um, update those religiously. So we don't believe that this will cause any other, um, you know, any additional, you know, uh, concerns in the, in the community to open one hour early to allow for, uh, a delicious brunch menu, as you can see. Um, and constantly changing menus. It's just an additional offering and we, um, are requesting to, um, uh, change the hours to stay in line with all of the rest of our locations, to keep it consistent company-wide. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
I have a question. Um, in the Doral location, I think, do you have one in?
Doral.
Yes. Um, do, is, does that one open at 10 AM?
It does.
And, um, you've noticed, is it a busy, is it busy at 10 or does it start getting busy at 11 or?
I, I, I cannot answer that. I can get back to you with an answer to that. Um, I don't know specifically if they're busy right at 10 AM, if people are like knocking down the doors to get in. Um, I have been, I'm from Illinois, so I have been in several of our Illinois locations for brunch and it's a slow trickle, you know? Sometimes it's right after church that you get a little pop, but, um, I would not imagine that everyone's, you know, barreling through the doors at, at, exactly at 10 AM.
In the other locations nationally, have there been any issues, any negative impact?
We haven't heard anything so far. We've had nothing but, um, you know, great feedback.
Thank you.
Yeah, my pleasure.
So, um, currently, you're gonna be, you wanna do it on Saturday and Sunday?
Yes, we host our brunch on Saturday and Sunday only and it's a limited menu. It's addition to our regular menu, so you can come in and order brunch or off of the regular menu. Um, so we would like to start Saturday and Sunday at 10 AM as opposed to 11 AM.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that, but I wouldn't like you doing that Monday through Friday.
Absolutely. Absolutely, understood.
But it doesn't say that in the application.
It says, oh.
Correct, the application was, um, was, um, updated to ask for, all of the days of the week, we're happy to accept Saturday and Sunday, just for the brunch hours. That's not a problem at all.
Can we change it still?
Yes, when you, I'm sorry, when you make your motion, just make it motion with the, with the, uh, what was offered from the applicant, which is for the weekend only.
Okay. Is Member Goldish?
Just along that line. And so, as you just said, on the application, it says, uh, Monday through Sunday for the 10 o'clock.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is that something that you think that you're gonna do in the future? And, and just kinda will do it now and then you have to come back to us?
Yeah.
Is that what you eventually want to do?
That was the, that was the, that was the thought behind it, um, considering, um, we do know that, you know, hotels and racket clubs can also serve earlier than 11, so we thought we would just go for the, all seven days and we're only acting on the Saturday and Sunday, correct?
That's why I was asking, because I know a lot of places open at 10 for brunch, Monday through, or Monday through Sunday. And it's early and people wanna, wanna marry or whatever.
Exactly, yes. Yeah, we like to be able to, um, provide our guests with what they want when they come in.
Member Lawrie, did you have a question?
I do have a question.
Yes.
Of all your locations, is there any location that is not opening at 10?
There are a handful, there's a, a few and we're, we're working on trying to get all of them changed. Dania Beach currently, that's a location that also does not allow, um, the off-premise sales to start. So they do allow on-premise sales for alcohol. So you can go in and order, uh, you know, a cocktail, but you can't, um, have your bottle sales on Sundays until noon. So that's a restriction we're working on as well. Because we'd like to have our guests come in, have brunch and then be able to pick up their wine of the month or purchase a bottle to go home with. Um, and, and currently, so currently, we're only allowing 11 o'clock start time and hopefully that gap of one hour, we can sell the bottles.
So how many loca, locations, was I, you said Dania Beach? Is that the only location that's not allowing you to open at 10 AM?
And the state of Ohio, that's a state regulation that we can't change. Mm-hmm, state of Florida, every, everywhere else is.
And you've come before the planning board there and they've turned it down?
Not yet. Mm-mm.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
No question.
Any other questions?
No.
Can I have a motion on this item from someone?
Make, make a motion to approve as written on the application.
As written?
As written.
Sunday through Sunday?
Yes. So she doesn't have, they don't have to come back to us later?
Well, I would like to amend that.
Excuse me, I also need to have the reason A, B, or C. Okay.
What?
Which?
Under what?
We couldn't hear what you said.
She wants to know the reason.
There has to be, like, you approve it for A, B, or C? Like, if you're looking at the bottom of the staff memo, the reason that you believe they should get the variances because of A, B, or C? I need that as well as part of the motion.
Um, I would go with C then.
C.
Granted, the variance not, not incompatible with public policy law.
Okay, so if I wanna amend the motion, how?
Ma, Madam Chair?
Hi.
If there's a motion, then the, the most appropriate thing is to ask if there's a second and entertain if there's a second, uh, and then move, move on from there.
I can't hear you.
He wants to know if there's a second to his motion, so I'm with you.
Is there a second to Member Goldish's motion?
I, I'll second him, I'll second the motion. You wanna make an amendment?
Now we vote, correct?
No, you, and you wanna make a choice to make, make an amendment to change it from?
Well, currently, it's written as every day. So what he, um, motioned was so that we stay with what is written?
Correct.
And approve, and you've just seconded that?
I've seconded it.
We're gonna vote on it.
No, no, but Linda wants to make an amendment. You wanna offer an amendment on the motion.
Ma, Madam Chair, there's a motion and a second, now it's appropriate to take a vote? Then if, then if, for whatever reason, the vote doesn't, if the vote fails, then there's a process after that, but.
But once the motion has been made and seconded, isn't there an opportunity to have an amendment, to make a, make a request for an amendment to the motion?
What, there, there, if, if the maker of the motion would like to entertain, uh, an amendment, however, the most appropriate thing usually is when there's a motion, a motion and a second, is to proceed with the vote.
Well, but the motion has been presented to the, on, to the body and has been seconded.
Yes.
So now, the chairperson wishes to ask for an amendment. You're saying that you have to vote on the, on the, uh?
You have to vote on the motion and the second.
I disagree with you, but okay.
So, Member Goldage made the motion seconded by a member of eight, gotta write this time. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, no.
Opposed.
Who else opposed it?
Gonzalez.
The two Gonzalases.
Yeah, Madam Chair, we would ask that you have a roll call vote.
Cheryl, would you like to call the roll on this vote? Member alloy, Alloy?
No.
Member Deacon Gonzalez?
No.
Member Levate?
Yes.
Chairwoman Gonzalez?
No.
And Vice Chairman Goldage?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay.
Now there could be another.
I'd like to make a motion to have the weekend at ten AM, not only Saturday and Sunday.
And under C as well.
Under C as well, yes. Thank you.
No second?
Do I have a second?
Alloy.
Member Alloy is seconded. Motion made by Doris Gonzalez, seconded by Member Alloy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All is opposed?
No.
I said aye.
So it passed. Four to one, is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, I.
I was the only one opposed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Four to one. Okay. The last item on our agenda is also quasi judicial, ZV twenty twenty five zero zero two, Love and Hope Care Centers. And we received a quasi judicial proceeding affected person form from a Bruce Kavner on this item, and he wrote that he is in favor of the petition.
We also had this document, remember?
Yeah.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Oasis, good evening, and I'm here.
Can't hear you.
Speak into the mic.
Yeah.
Oh, can you hear me better?
Yeah, there you go.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm here to represent Love and Hope Care Centers, and basically, we are here today because we're requesting a parking variance to allow us to have fifteen parking slots instead of twenty-two, which is what is required by the city. We think that with this center, the city of Pembroke Pines will be greatly benefit from the establishment by enhancing care for children with special needs and the local community. It would also provide vital support for families, offering respite care, and improving quality for life for the children with special conditions. That is the presentation. Are there any questions?
So, just to understand, this used to be a childcare center?
It's going to be a childcare center, yes.
So you, you foresee that you will need less spaces?
Yes.
Is, because, what was it before?
Am I allowed to, to ask, before?
So just, just to clarify, just, just to clarify, I apologize, just to clarify, this was daycare center use. And after a while, so what happens is, after the daycare use left, there's a certain amount of time in which another same use could come in. After that time's over, the, the next business that comes in has to meet requirements. So this is non-conforming site, and they're trying to bring in a new daycare with the existing parking that's there. But because the code had changed over the years, they could not occupy the building without coming for a variance, or finding more parking spaces to add to the site. So they're just basically retrofitting the existing use that was there before, but they're trying to legalize it in this case.
Thank you. How many children will be in this location?
Sixty.
Oh, sixty, thank you.
I actually went and visited the site, and there are no other businesses around it. And it's right now, it was being cleaned up by landscaping, so it was kind of a mess when you guys caught it.
It is.
Anyway, I read that you were gonna try to stagger pickups for the children, I think that's kind of hard to do, because most people come like at five, or like four. You have a very wide portico, are you planning to have like two or three cars pull up under that, and then load the children into the cars and have them form a line, or how are you gonna do it?
Well, the idea is that the caregivers or the clients are gonna drop them off and pick them up. At the moment, we're not planning on having transportation for the clients, so that's why we think that fifteen parking slot is gonna be enough.
So you're gonna have the cars line up and pull up under the portico?
Yes, for the drop off.
Because once you do that, then you can't really park in those twelve spaces, right? Because you'd be blocking the spaces?
The parking's are.
Coming in from the short entrance?
Yes, but the parking's are, the fifteen parking's are on the sides and the back, and then we have a front part where they can line up for the pickups.
Okay, so you're, but you're gonna try to stagger the pickup times?
I'm sorry?
You're going to try to stagger the pickup times, I read that in your paperwork.
We're trying to, to get into like, an idea for that, we were not sure about that yet, for the pickups of the, and drop off.
And what are your hours of operation again?
It's gonna be, at the moment, it's gonna be nine to five.
Nine to five, okay, so most people will be coming at five. I didn't see a problem with the site, because there's really nothing around it, across the street, or townhouses, or apartments, older buildings, and it's, property's a mess. I mean, they were cleaning it up, when I drove by, the landscaping people, it's really a mess, so I think anything you do there would be nice.
How many employees will you have?
Uh, we're not planning on having more than ten employees.
So if there's fifteen spaces, then there's only gonna be five for, for visitors?
Yes.
And, and you believe that that's sufficient?
Uh, we believe so, because like I said before, we're only gonna have drop offs and pickups, it's not like we're gonna have parents on the side, or anybody else by the.
Is there any other areas that are adjacent to it that can be utilized for, if we, if we granted the, the variance?
No.
No?
No.
So if I'm a mom of a small child, and I want to go to your business, and I want to learn about your school, or the location, facility, and apply, I have to park to meet you inside, right? So that means that it only allows for five spaces to do, conduct business?
That is correct, but we also have another location that's not gonna be our primary location. We, we are located also in Doral, it's not a daycare center, but it's a behavioral analysis therapy, which is gonna be our main.
Administrative?
Yeah, correct.
There was, if you're facing the building, there, the parking was over here on the right, but then on the left of the building, it looked like there was space for people to park, a small space, like for maybe two cars to pull in there?
I wouldn't be able to answer that, I've never been to the actual facility yet.
So, I, I'm concerned that we have, a child doesn't feel well, and then you, you call a parent to come in to, come and take the child out. Will there be, in your, in your view, you, you think you would have sufficient areas for the parents to park their car, come in, and retrieve their children?
We believe so, yes.
You believe that that's gonna be sufficient for that? I mean, if you have three or four kids who get sick, and the parents come, what are you gonna do with the parents who come with their cars? What, what is your, what are you looking at so that you can accommodate four or five parents who are coming to pick up the children at a time? Is there, is there, would you just line them up under the portico? What would you, what are you, what are you planning on doing for that?
We believe that around the area, like parking on the streets.
Okay, and is there, in your, is there, is there enough open parking, public parking in that area for people to park their car and walk in?
Yes.
I, I'd like to ask two questions. I have two questions. Number one, in your application, it says that the operating hours is from eight AM to five PM. Just to, you said nine AM, is it eight or nine?
I'm sorry, if I said nine, my mistake is from eight to five.
So it's at eight. Okay, my second question is, as I'm looking at the street, these are, it appears that it's a two-lane roadway, correct? There's five core going onto eighty-ninth terrace?
Yeah, it's a two-lane.
So, so the vehicles, as they're waiting for the children, are gonna be blocking the street? Or they're gonna be able to go in under the portico and come out to the other way?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
First time, so, I'm very familiar with the area, lived right across the street from this, on the other side of Tapp, for thirty-something years. And that, I know that, that building has been a very varying thing. It's even been, it's been kitty, kids' care, adult care, all kinds of other stuff. There's, how many parking sp- I didn't, I went by, I went by there today too, just to refresh my memory. Existing parking spaces on the property now is only fifteen, correct? Okay, so, I guess we need to grant the variance, because there's no other where, no other place for them to put parking. There is, there is no other place to put parking, I mean, they can't, there's a business, there's Seven-Eleven and that shopping center behind it, on that border to Tapp Street, they're on the street on the other side, and then there's, I believe, townhouses next to it.
Correct.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay. Can I ask one more question? Before you do that, please, just of our team? Is it, is it, are we, is there a way that we can recommend that at least one of the spots be a drop off spot?
Well, there's a big portico over the entrance.
So that, that you think that would be enough?
It, it could hold like three cars, I think, couldn't three cars?
So like, like maybe like a five-minute parking, you know, where they could just go in and pick up their kid and?
Well, because they'd all be coming at five, and then.
It would, it would be in conflict with short-term parking, so right now, we, when we assign us short-term parking space, it, it is, it is separate from what the requirements are there, so, so we only allow you if you have access.
Okay.
In, in reality on this, and I'm not trying to talk about the operations here, but they do have the portico shade in those particular cases, and they will have the five parking spaces, whether that will work or not, will have to be up to the function of the applicant.
Thank you. Okay, you were making a motion, so?
I did.
Yep.
Do I have a second to, um, Member Goldage's motion?
Was it member, was it A, B, or C?
Under C, yes.
Oh.
And I will second it.
Motion made by Member Goldage, seconded by a member Doris Gonzalez, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Good luck.
It's really a terrible mess.
It's been empty for, I didn't notice how long, you know, I was, yeah, they were out there, I saw them out there. You probably went by there not too long before or after I did.
Maybe I saw you there.
No, I just drove through.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be difficult.
Are there any items that request of the board?
They didn't.
Items that they request of staff?
Yes, two items, and I'll bring up one not related to that, however, in the future, you will probably see some variances for older properties in the city, okay? Like this property, many of the, many of the items will come forward, parking lots and stuff that are coming to meet new ADA requirements. You'll start to see them lose parking spaces because of that.
You know, I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. So you'll, you'll start to see older properties come into conformance, because they have to meet ADA requirements. And when they do that, they'll also start to meet fire requirements, where maybe perhaps they didn't in the past. So some of these buildings have been here for a long time, and there comes a decision on those properties, right? Granting them a variance in order for them to continue operating in a legal manner in this particular way, or not granting them. Underst- with the understanding that those properties cannot support any coming forward. So by not supporting those, it really makes the property useless to an extent. It can go to, it, it, you know, it can, it could start to go down as far as standards-wise. Or it might be assigned for the owner of the property to consider demoing it and rebuilding to code. And this is kind of the battle that we're dealing with today. And a lot of these cases, like I said, especially because of ADA requirements, they're getting hit with these. So obviously, I'm not, would never tell you guys how to move forward with them, there are definitely some concerns that creep up, but don't be surprised in the future if you see some of these. So some judgment calls are gonna have to be made on some of them, but just realize that in many cases, especially with single users, there is not much that we can put back there, essentially making the property, you know, but non-conforming, and, and.
So Joe, along those lines, can you, when you, when you give us the memos on this, indicate, as you had in this one, where that indicated the history of that property? But not only that, whether there, the viability of any increasing, the ability to increase the number of spots that were there? If there, if, if you, when your engineering reports are preparing, if they could let us know if there's, if there's a possibility of adding spots?
Well, I, I can do this, because remember, this is a request by the, by the applicants that are there. Some of them will entertain parking lot improvements, and we'll push those improvements if we can. Certain ones, even if we push the improvements, they won't be able to hit the target. So what we can do before they come in, is we can let them know what you're speaking of, and so that they can explain to you, because remember, they hire engineers. Our city engineers don't design parking lots for them, they review the design of a project, of a specialist that they hire in order to do so. Some things are pretty obvious, Ms. Gonzalez, you could see, go to a site, you could see potential areas in which, which it looks like there could be, green areas where there could be parking, and we don't realize that there's utility, underground utilities and other items like that. So, so really, the burden becomes on them to explain that to you, but as staff, we have no problem asking, telling them that the board's gonna want to know that you've exhausted every opportunity for parking spaces in this, in sight.
Yeah, on this side, I couldn't see anywhere where you could add parking anywhere. Unfortunately.
Second item. I know, and I thank you all for your, your flexibility in allowing us to have the meeting tonight, as opposed to two weeks ago, and when we, when we come up with this. Remember, planning and zoning board meetings were originally scheduled for the second and the fourth Thursday of the month. But because of the amount of work coming in, we've been able to do it one time a month, and it's usually the first, the second Thursday of the month. We do have a scenario, and I'm asking you guys right now, well in advance, we have a June twelfth meeting, and we would like to, if it's okay with the board, put it on June twenty-sixth. And the reason we're asking for that is because July, we have a break, you know, no boards meet in July. So the closer we get it to, to the end of June, the less people feel the, the break, because we have some small businesses that come in, and if we start in June twelfth, we don't meet up next till August sometime. And for some of the smaller businesses, you know, the extra month or so is, is, is burdensome. So, again, it's up to you guys, I'm bringing you up to you tonight, whether or not you want to do it. If you don't know tonight, that's fine, or you want to come back and, and, and check calendars, but if you guys are fine with it, then we'll make it on June twenty-sixth, and if not, then we'll keep the June twelfth meeting.
I'm okay with the twenty-sixth.
Me too.
Twenty-sixth? Speaking of calendars, you know, this, I thought the meeting was last week, and I went to the city calendar, and it was down there for last week. I talked to Cheryl about it, and she was gonna check with.
Right.
The city clerk. But that's kind of really bad to have the wrong date on the, on the city calendar.
Well, we, we checked, and we, we didn't, we didn't see it, but I'm not gonna say you did, I, I'm not gonna say it wasn't there, but I'm gonna say, as soon as, as soon as that phone call happened, we went online to check, and it had been, I believe the date had been in the place that it had been in for tonight. But again, I, I can't speak to that, I'll certainly talk to the clerk. If you guys do choose the twenty-sixth, we will certainly go to, we will go to the clerk immediately and be able to, we have a couple of months beforehand, so.
The April meeting is which day, just so that?
April tenth.
Thank you.
We do need a vote on that, so if you guys are willing to do that.
So you need a motion and a vote, or? I, I moved that we accept the June twenty-sixth date for the June meeting, twenty twenty-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Member Goldage, motion by Member Levate, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can you verify, it is a 6:30 PM?
Yes, it's a six, what's it, 6:30, yes, yeah, 6:30. And so there will not be a 12th meeting, this will replace the 12th meeting, it'll be the 26th.
I think last year, did we have a lot of trouble with graduations? For the June meeting?
Again, they, they don't graduate in, in here, so I guess we'll find, but we will, but again, we will talk to facilities here and make sure there's accommodations for, for the board members and, and the public, if that becomes a motion.
Okay, our meeting is adjourned.
What is the April meeting?
Thank you.
April 10th.
We have two members missing, did they contact you, Cheryl?
No.
Okay, so I guess we don't excuse them? Cheryl?
It's up to you guys if you want to.
April, April 10th, it's always a, it's always a second.
I mean, you can, you can see if they call and say something, and at our next meeting, you can do that then if you want, or you can excuse them, even though they didn't call and let us know, that's entirely up to you.
No, I think that if they can't call in, then we shouldn't excuse them.[1767.81]